And why does Don have two name tags? You not sure?
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to June 24, 2024, Toowalton City Council meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting in order and we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Counselor Gonzalez tonight. Bates, the flag needs to be on the other side. All right. That brings us to announcements. Our first announcement is the Police Department Reaccreditation Award. Chief Pickering. I got it right, it's a chief.
This time.
It only took how long?
Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you very much. So, as many of you know, the Police Department has been accredited through the Northwest Accreditation Alliance, formerly the Oregon Accreditation Alliance, for over 15 years now. This being our fifth accreditation. Every three years, the department's policies and procedures are evaluated through submissions of standard proofs as well as onsite evaluations. I'm happy to announce that we have once again been reaccredited. On screen is Scott Hayes, who is the Executive Director of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance, who will speak briefly about the accreditation process and present the award. So, Scott, I'll turn it over to you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for the introduction, Chief, and good evening, mayors, councilors, and members of the community. As introduced, I'm Scott Hayes, the Executive Director for the Northwest Accreditation Alliance. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council and present the Toowalton Police Department with its fifth award of accreditation under the leadership of Chief Greg Pickery. Law enforcement is experiencing a change in society with increased demands for police accountability and transparency. As in our past, our profession must face these challenges and work with our communities to address their concerns. Accreditation is one step towards building community trust and the legitimacy of our profession. The Northwest Accreditation Alliance was formed under the direction of the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, and the Association of Public Safety Communications Officials, and provides accreditation services for 95 law enforcement and communication centers, both in Oregon and a few in Alaska. Accreditation goals are straightforward: to support the continued improvement of law enforcement services, to establish best practice, excuse me, through professional standards, to establish legitimate agency accountability and transparency, and to enhance management of operations. For the Toowalton Police Department to become accredited, it had to adhere to 108 law enforcement standards. Compliance is generally in the form of policies and procedures in adherence to Oregon Revised Statute, Oregon Administrative Rules, and city policy. Our standards are established based on best practice nationally and through changes in federal and Oregon law. In addition to each of the 108 standards, the agency must also show proof of compliance that it follows policy and best practices. Reaccreditation then occurs every three years. This is really a monumental step for any agency to be evaluated by an outside independent organization and have its policies and procedures scrutinized. I know several staff members were involved in the process, including the chief and his command staff, but I'd also like to recognize the efforts of Accreditation Manager Jennifer Macy, who worked very diligently to prepare the agency for its review. So, Chief Pickering, on behalf of the Northwest Accreditation Alliance and its Board of Directors, I would like to congratulate you and your city on receiving the fifth award of accreditation.
Thank you very much. And yeah, I will also give a shout out to Jennifer Massey. She's incredible and does a great work when it comes to providing our standards and making sure that we all stay on track when, you know, providing her with the things that she needs to provide to the Accreditation Alliance. So, thank you very much, Mr. Hayes, I appreciate it, and thank you very much, Council.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to public comment. And public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address the City Council on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the room who would like to speak to the council, this would be the appropriate time, and I'll follow that with folks who are on Zoom. Do we have any folks who want to chat with us? No? All right. Everybody's watching hockey, yep. Enjoying the weather. Oh, cool, all right. But they're watching on TV on the hockey there. All right. It's a big game, big comeback. That brings us to the consent agenda. These items are considered routine, they'll be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like to remove from our agenda tonight and heard later. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of Item Number One: Consideration of Approval of the Work Session and Regular Meeting Minutes of June 10, 2024; Item Two: Consideration of Resolution Number 5777-24: Awarding the Contract for Engineering, Public Engagement, and Construction Management to the B-Level Reservoir and Pump Station; Item Number Three: Consideration of Resolution Number 5780-24: Authorizing the City of Toowalton Enter into a Letter of Agreement with Washington County Disability, Aging, and Veteran Services; Item Number Four: Consideration of Resolution 5781-24: Authorizing Personnel Services Updates for Nonrepresented Employees for Fiscal Year 2024/2025; Item Number Five: Consideration of Resolution Number 5782-24: Approving and Authorizing Provision of Workers' Compensation Insurance Coverage to Volunteers of the City of Toowalton; Item Six: Consideration of Resolution Number 5783-24: Awarding a Contract for CCTV Inspections to Pacific Inner Tech; Item Seven: Consideration of Resolution Number 5785-24: Amending Water, Sewer, Stormwater, Road, and Parks Utility Fee Rates; Item Eight: Consideration of Resolution 5788-24: Adopting the City of Toowalton 2025/2020, 2029 Capital Improvement Plan; Item Nine: Consideration of Resolution Number 5789-24: Increasing the Change Order Authorization Amount for the Toowalton River Greenway Trail Extension Construction Project with Brown Contracting; Item Number Ten, as I scroll down, is Consideration of Resolution 5790-24: Increasing the Change Order Authorization Amount for the Toowalton River Greenway Trail Construction Documents and Professional Service Contract with Auto Planning and Design. Would any council like an item removed from consent tonight? And heard later, I should say.
I move that we adopt the consent agendas red. Second?
I have a motion, second, to adopt the consent agenda as reading discussions on those motions. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. All right, that brings us to public hearings. Public hearing number one: Consideration of Resolution Number 5787-24: Authorizing Changes to the Fiscal Year 2023/2024 Adopted Budget.
I'm just going to move in up here.
I know, we're going to be sitting here for a while.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Don Hudson, I'm the Assistant City Manager here at the City of Toowalton. And you have in front of you this evening Resolution Number 5787-24 to authorize changes to the fiscal year 2023/2024 adopted budget. So, local budget law allows for changes to the previously adopted budget under particular circumstances. So, tonight's public hear, public hearing, excuse me, is for a condition that was not ascertained at the time we put together the budget. Not requiring a public hearing, but included in the attached resolution, are transfers of existing appropriations within a fund that are also authorized under local budget law. So, in the building fund, we have seen a lot more development and a lot more online permitting, which requires credit card purchases. Because of that, our merchant discount fees, the amount we get charged for that use of credit cards, has gone up significantly. So, there is a portion of the contingency funds we're asking to be moved into the materials and services category to cover that increase of those expenditures. Because most of those charges are related to the development funds for SDCs, we're going to be transferring the, we're apportioning out the amount that is from the SDCs and moving that into the building fund. That's the part that is the public hearing this evening for two of those funds. So, the development funds that we are impacted by this are the Transportation Development Tax Fund, or the TDT, the Park Development Fund, the Stormwater Oper, or Development Fund, the Water Development Fund, and the Sewer Development Fund. The water and sewer development funds do not have contingencies appropriated in the current fiscal year. So, we need to take those from the reserve balances in those two funds. That's the portion that is required of the public hearing this evening, to move something out of the reserve and adding that the appropriation requires a public hearing. The other impacted funds, development funds, do have contingency available, and we'll be making those transfers of contingency if you approve the resolution. Excuse me. In addition to the material and services increases for the building fund for the merchant discount fees, so personnel changes and the associated costs related to those changes in the building fund require or will necessitate a contingency transfer as well, and that's included in your resolution in front of you. Other contingency transfers in the general fund are for unforeseen overages for the Police Department Laptop Replacement Project as well as the replacement of the Badge Access System at the Police Department. Those are both in the Information Services Budget. We're also in the Information Services Department, able to take advantage of offers to pay for software licensing in a multiple years at a significant savings. We took advantage of those, so those were paid in '23, '24, which will give us savings in the future years. Another contingency transfer that's proposed in the resolution is increased personnel costs in the Engineering Department. That's because we, in the past, we've had a dedicated transportation engineer out of the Road Operating Fund. With the bond project being completed, we hired an engineering and assistant associate paid for out of the General Fund and Engineering. They do still do some transportation, but we don't have that dedicated, excuse me, the dedicated keys, so we're not paying for it out of the Road Operating Fund any longer, it's coming out of the General Fund. That person was hired this year, so you'll, there were some increased expenditures in that program, and we're asking for a contingency transfer to cover those. Speaking of personnel changes, after Jonathan Taylor left, we looked at that position and met current operational needs, and that new position is actually funded out of the administration budget, where Jonathan's position in the current budget, it was budgeted in finance. So, to cover those costs, there's a transfer of an appropriation from the Finance Department to appropriations in the administration budget. On a positive note, I mean, not that those aren't positive things as well, we saw additional revenues, increased revenues in the road utility fees as well as the vehicle license fees from Washington and Clackamas Counties. There are transfers that happen when those, related to those revenues. For example, 1/7 of the road utility revenue goes for street lighting, transfers in the Road Operating Fund. So, since we had increased revenues, we have to increase that transfer, so there's an appropriation transfer in the road utility fund, as well as the vehicle license fees. The council made a decision a few years back to transfer those monies into the road utility fee for the pavement maintenance program. So, with those additional revenues, that also necessitates a transfer, and so the contingency transfer for those appropriations is included as well. The last adjustment that's in the resolution tonight is the Parks Utility Fee Fund. Everything, so we saw increases in the mailing for utility bills, so the Parks Utility has their share as well as the utility bill assistance program. So, since that started up, we did not have anything budgeted in there, but as we've been getting people participating in that program, we have expenditures there. So, because the budgets are just in material and services and capital, you'll see we're requesting a transfer from the capital outlay category into material and services to cover that overage. All those changes are documented in the attached resolution. As I said, the two that is really the public hearing are those transfers out of the Water and Sewer Development Fund, but the rest, though, are included in the resolution. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Since this is a public hearing, I'll ask anyone from the public who would like to testify in regard to this resolution authorizing changes to the fiscal '23, '24 adopted budget. Do we have anyone? There's no one here. No one in Zoom? All right. Questions for Don? Counsel Brooks?
As far as the credit card fees, my curiosity is why don't we have that as part of the billing structure?
So, we do include as a cost of, cost of doing business, so it's factored into the rates we charge, but we don't have a separate fee that is added on to the credit card. There is a lot of rules around it of doing it, and so we've just made the decision in the past to consider the cost of doing business, and when we set rates and fees, factor that in. It just, we've seen more activity the last couple of years, so as we go forward, we'll be keeping that in consideration when we set fees.
Okay. Yeah, I think that it would be good in the future to consider setting fees differently, because I'd like to really see the, like, the SDCs and everything go into the projects that we're really aiming to do that for instead of having it go to credit card fees. Frankly, that's my perspective. That's my only question. Thank you very much for all the work.
Other questions? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close this public hearing, and we can start deliberations. Or a motion.
I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution Number 5787-24: Authorizing Changes to the Fiscal Year 2023/2024 Adopted Budget.
I have a question.
Sure.
Is this, is this the point where we talk about the other? Okay. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 5787-24: Authorizing Changes to the Fiscal Year '23, '24 Adopted Budget. Any discussion on those motions? This is a roll call vote, so Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the resolution is adopted unanimously.
Thank you.
I can change, take a sip of soda here, you're losing your voice a little bit.
And I can see, because that's like.
All right. That brings us to our second public hearing, Consideration of Resolution 5786-24: Adopting the City of Toowalton Budget for the Fiscal Year Commencing July 1, 2024: Making Appropriations, Leveing Ad Valorem Taxes, and Categorizing the Levis. I'll go ahead, I didn't say it last time, but we knew it was a hearing. Go ahead and open this hearing, and we'll have the presentation from staff, Mr. Hudson.
Thank you. I am still Don Hudson, your Assistant City Manager and Finance Director here at the city. You have in front of you Resolution 5786-24. As the mayor said, it's adopting the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2024: Making Appropriations, Leveing or Ad Valorem Taxes, and Categorizing our Levis. Statutes require the council adopt a budget prior to July 1, and the proposed budget was approved by the Toowalton Budget Advisory Committee on May 29. In addition to the budget that was approved by that budget committee, the council has the ability to change the approved budget by no more than 10% of the total budget in each fund. Staff is proposing two changes to the, the committee-approved budget this evening. The first is, due to staff changes in fiscal year '24, the Neighborhood Transportation Safety Program in the Road Operating Fund was delayed, so staff is asking the council to carry over $140,000 for fiscal year 2023, 2024 into fiscal year '24, '25 in the Road Operating Fund. In the Vehicle Replacement Fund, we have placed orders for police vehicles many months ago. We think that all will be in by June 30, except for one, and so we are proposing to carry over $55,000 in the Vehicle Replacement Fund for that vehicle that's not projected to be received this week. With these adjustments, the total city of Toowalton budget is $158,563,925. In addition, the resolution in front of you imposes the city's permanent tax rate of $2.2665 per thousand of dollars of assessed value for operations and $4,937,120 for bonded debt service. By adopting the attached resolution, the city will be able to operate, expend money, and incur liabilities for fiscal year 2024, 2025, beginning on July 1. Also, at the Budget Committee meeting last month, there was a discussion about the Climate Action Plan implementation, and staff committed to provide further information. So, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Sherilyn to talk about what we have found out since that time.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager Hudson. We have a little slide deck that I think Bates is going to pull up. So, after the, so the Climate Action Plan was adopted on May 28 by the City Council, and then there was a discussion on May 29 at the Budget Committee meeting about the, the implementation and the work plan. The Steering Committee met on June 13. That Steering Committee is made up of an interdepartmental group of folks as well as Counsel President Pratt and Counselor Brooks. I'm going to talk a little bit about some of the things that we talked about at that Steering Committee, and then it will end with a budget consideration. So, the Climate Action Plan has 146 actions. Most need further scoping and cost estimates. Yeah. Some other considerations for the Climate Action Plan besides budget are: Where does the plan live in the organization? It's a, both administration-wise as well as actions, so that, that may be different. It needs a shepherd, you know, someone to, to kind of shepherd it through the organization as well as the community and to keep track of things. And then there's actions certainly that are in different departments and in the community. How will we create staff capacity to implement the plan? That's actually a very big consideration. You know, we are very lean, as you know, and don't have anyone just sitting around waiting for a big new initiative to take on, so there's that consideration. How do we incorporate the plan into our daily work? That has already begun, and there's lots of considerations in the organization of this and of how to, existing work that's happening, whether that's the Climate Friendly Equitable Communities, the Transportation System Plan, our own internal, we have a strategic energy management challenge that we've been going through with Energy Trust of Oregon. So, those types of things, buying electric vehicles. So, how do we continue to incorporate the plan into our daily work? And then finally, how will we fund the implementation, both ongoing as well as those one-time, time costs associated with projects? So, our recommendation for year one is to set the groundwork, the foundational groundwork internally. The, there was a ton of work to get the Climate Action Plan to this point and get it across the finish line for adoption, and there needs to be some internal work about who owns what, where, where, what comes first? Are there these cascading effects for, for actions? And so, so some questions internally that just need to be worked through and addressing programmatic development. How do we, how do we stand up a climate action program internally? There needs to be some scope, some work done on scoping the projects and the work plan development. And then, we're recommending bringing on a consultant to develop some funding options and strategies for the long term. In the meantime, in the 2020, in the '24, '25 budget, there are a number of things that are, these are the new ones. As I mentioned, there is ongoing work that we're inventorying right now that isn't new money, but there's $10,000 for a backyard habitat collab, a collaboration with Backyard Habitat to roll out their program in, in town. There's scoping for a water conservation program, and we're excited about moving that forward. You heard about, at the last council meeting, the Hydro Turbine Project. That's 214,000 after grants, and so that's in the budget as well. And then we have $23,000 to stand up a resource hub for community education. So, the consideration that we have in front of you tonight is to add $125,000 to non-departmental as a placeholder for two specific actions. We got some quotes and have done some rough scoping of both of these, and we believe that this is an adequate amount to, to do. Number one, hire a firm to facilitate the prioritization and development of a five-year implementation plan. And then, two, hire a firm to analyze and provide options for a sustainable funding strategy. So, we think both of those together, $125,000 will be a very adequate placeholder. It may even provide funds to do some additional actions as we, as we get going. But the next step would be to, after the budget's adopted, to proceed with these posthaste and then convene the Steering Committee to help us with it, but then come back to council for adoption of a, a five-year implementation plan. That's it.
Thank you. So, if, as council discusses any of that, if there's any other changes that are proposed to be added to the budget tonight, I will have one other request to add, $10,000 in the library budget. But if we're not adding anything to the, the resolution that is on the table right now, I'll take care of that at a later date. As that goes on, I will answer any questions.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify regarding Resolution 5786-24: Adopting the Fiscal '24, '25 Budget? Still no one? Still watching the game? All right. With that, I'll go ahead and see if the council has questions. For Don or Sherilyn. Counsel Brooks?
Well, first of all, I just have a comment. Thanks for, I'll wait for a second. I wanted to thank you for the presentation and the consideration and the work and putting it together and the information. I think that it's really important to do the work on the foundation part, and that's going to make it a much better plan and have more effectiveness and ability to build capacity. I do have thoughts around, like, if this gets done faster than a year, if the next steps that what we're going to do, and have an open mind about, you know, like, moving forward on the implementation plan and, and keeping things moving in a good direction, and hopefully we'll have the money to cover that. And if we don't, we'll talk about that. But I enthusiastically support the motion. Thanks.
Other, any other questions or comments for Don or Sherilyn? Counsel Hillier?
Thank you for this information. I'm curious, in your estimates, and I know that it was a quick put-together and a rough, a lot of times when you hire someone to help you with funding sources, it's, it gives you the opportunity to fund that consultant to continue to oversee the work. Is that part of the goal of this? Because I, I know how lean we are. No, it would not be. Okay, thanks.
Other questions? Or comments, yeah? Or is it, is part of deliberation or comment?
I actually just wanted, I just wanted to thank Sherilyn. She put a lot of work into making this happen and listening to what was said and just coordinating the effort, so, thank you very much.
Any other questions? So, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and now we can move into council deliberations and/or motions.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt, where is it? Resolution Number 5786-24? Is that right?
I believe, so.
As amended?
I think you have, you need to make, Kevin. I think you have, you need to make, Kevin.
Yeah, thank you. And I don't know, it appears maybe the city has not had an adjustment to the budget done at this particular meeting. So there's a couple of ways to do this. I think what I would recommend is to actually make the main motion, adopting the budget, and go through that language, have that seconded, and then have a motion to amend, and then the council can take care of the, are there two adjustments or three?
I would have two on the table, because I'd have the 125 into non-departmental and an additional 10 into the library.
So when there is a motion to amend, and that would, you would need to look to Don to give you the exact language about what budget items are to be adjusted, have that in the amendment. Vote on the amendment first. If that passes, then vote on the main motion.
So do two motions, back-to-back, vote on one, and then vote on the second.
It's a main motion, a motion to amend, vote on the motion to amend, then vote on the main motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I basically said the main motion, which was adopting this, the city budget. Resolution 5786-24, adopting the city budget for the fiscal year commencing July 21st, 2024.
And do I motion to amend?
To second.
Or do we have, okay, I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 5786-24, adopting the fiscal year '24 budget. Any discussions on those motions? All right, so Counsel Hillier?
That would be the time for the motion to amend.
You're doing a motion on the motion? Okay.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget adoption, to amend, to add 100 and...
125,000 to non, it's general fund, non-departmental.
125,000 to general fund, non-departmental.
And 10,000 to general fund, library.
And 10,000 to general fund, library.
All right. I have a motion and a second to amend the budget. Now I can go through it. With the adjustment of $125,000 for general fund and $10,000 for the library.
General fund, non-departmental, general fund, library.
All right. Any discussions on that motion? So now we vote on which one first?
The amended.
All right. So with that, on the amended resolution recommendation, Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye. It is unanimous on the amendment. Now we do the vote on the second one, right? All right. Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. That is unanimous, and we have a city budget.
Yay, thank you.
All right. All right. All right. He's, he's here all night. Second show's coming. General business, item number one, ordinance 1487-24, establishing the core area parking district tax rate. Mr. Hudson, the floor is yours again.
Yay, thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, I have Don Hudson, the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director with the city. Still.
I think you look at Washington.
For now. So what you have in front of you is an ordinance 1487-24, which will establish the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year '24, '25. The municipal code 3-11 requires the city council establish the tax rate prior to the beginning of the tax year, which begins on July 1st. The Core Area Parking District Board met in March, and they're recommending an increase of the rate by 7% to $209.36. It's a whole formula on the tax rate. There's credits related. I can go into that if you wish. Otherwise, you could, I'll be more than happy to tell you what code section it is. At that, I'll turn it also over to Counsel Reyes, who's on the, is Elias on to that board to see if she's got any comments.
Just, we met March 18th or 19th? I can't remember, but we talked about it. We had several new committee members there, and we were all in accordance in having a this, this tax rate increase. So, oh, it's a good meeting. We're still, we're having another one, but yeah, we recommended this, all of us, and we're about six, six of us, around six of us, I can't remember exactly.
The tax revenue supports the operation and maintenance of the, of the core area parking lots. That'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify regarding ordinance 1487-24? Still none? All right. Questions for Don? Counsel President Pratt?
Wait for it? No. No, I, I was wondering if, and maybe Counsel Reyes can answer this, but are the, was this decision still made to try to do like gradual increases instead of just a big jump in five years?
No, I, actually, we were just focused on this if I'm, and we were just kind of explaining to new committee members as well, because we had about three join our committee. And I was explaining a lot of that, and everybody seemed to be in, in, in favor of it. But yeah, so we'll, more to discuss, I think, as things develop. But no, no, no one seemed to be against it or anything like that. They were really in favor.
In the long-term, look is provided to the board to look at, knowing what capital items are down in the future. We are looking to utilize ARPA funds for some of the ADA projects that have been part of the, that program. And so that will help the, the future years in the core area parking district as well. So we do look at a, about a five to 10-year picture.
Counsel Hillier?
Yeah, thank you. Could you share with us, please, what the rate of increase was last year and the year before, if you happen to know, and what you anticipate for next year, based on what you're seeing?
Counsel, do you remember?
FY '25, 7%.
In previous years, we've been up in that 5% to 7%. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me.
Yeah, that's, but I was not, I only, I joined last year, so I don't, was it last year? Yeah, that was my first, my first year. So I, I don't really know what, what happened prior to that.
It's been in the 5% to 7.
But it's about 7%, five, between five and seven, my understanding.
That's my recollection.
Thank you. And it sounds like that's the goal, to continue forward?
Ish, ish. Ish, yeah. As I said, we'll look at that. And now taking the ADA improvements out of the district, that will, we'll have to relook at that for future years, but that will take down some of the requirements that we're needing to build up for in the future years.
And can you remind me, please, is there a discount for nonprofits that work in that region, or is that not a thing?
I do not believe so.
Yeah, we didn't discuss any of that, but.
Is there consideration of that for the future?
I will be up to the board to discuss. The board makes recommendations to the council of policies as well as the tax rates. So that would be something the board can discuss and whether they'd want to bring it forward. So Counsel Reyes could bring that back to the board if that's so true.
Great, thank you so much.
But like, for instance, the city pays the fee because, because we're in the core, the libraries in the core area. Like, I, yeah, I mean, what Don said is absolutely correct, but the, I think everybody pays the same amount.
There was no exception, yeah.
I'm, I'm not suggesting, I'm just suggesting, is there a discount for nonprofits who operate in a different?
That's my recollection, no.
Okay.
Not that I remember either.
Other questions for Don? Yep, first and second, I'll get stuff.
I'd like to motion for first reading by title only of ordinance number 1487-24, establishing a core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year '24, '25.
Double second.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second for first reading by title only of ordinance 1487-24, establishing the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year '24, '25. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Counsel Gonzalez?
That'd be no.
Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye. So what we do when someone votes, gets the first reading?
Does it just have to pass?
You have to read the whole thing?
You have to read the entire, entire item.
Is that what you want, us to read the entire ordinance?
Counsel Gonzalez, I didn't know if that was the intent to vote potentially no on the ordinance or no on the first and second reading by title only. I think that you can reconsider your vote, Mayor, if you so choose, just to read by title only.
For your, I guess?
Yes.
For, for first reading?
For the first reading, yes.
All right.
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance number 1487-24, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
I'd like to motion for a second reading by title only of ordinance number 1487-24, establishing a core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance 1487-24, establishing the core area parking tax, core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year '24, '25. Any discussions on those motions? We'll start this side. Counsel Hillier?
Aye.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez?
This, no.
No, this is still yes.
This is yes.
Next one. Counsel Brooks?
Yes.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye. It's unanimous.
I will now read the title for second reading. Ordinance number 1487-24, an ordinance adopting the core area parking district tax rate and credit for fiscal year '24, '25.
I'd like to motion for adoption of ordinance number 1487-24, establishing a core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 1487-24, establishing the core area parking district tax rate for fiscal year '24, '25. Any discussions on those motions? Counsel Gonzalez?
This is where I've been putting.
This is it.
Then I would say no.
All right. Counsel Brooks?
Aye.
Counsel Hillier?
Sorry.
You want discussion?
Oh, I thought that's what you called for, sorry. Yes.
Counsel Reyes?
Aye.
Counsel President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye, so it's passed five to one.
Yeah, but it needs to come back.
Come back, yeah.
It will come back on July 8th for the third and final reading.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm going to leave you now until next meeting.
For a few minutes. All right. So that brings us to items removed from consent. We have none. Counsel Communications, we'll start with Counsel Hillier.
Thank you very much. So since last we met, I had the opportunity to fill in for the very well-respected Counselor Brooks at the PAB meeting. It was very fun to get to go as a second, and so thank you to Sherilyn and everyone for doing all the paperwork to make that happen. There were presentations from Community Action and Family Promise, similar to things that we've seen here at the council, which was, which was great. So they were talking about, you know, their standardized processes and consolidated planning processes and things for the future. It was very, very interesting and enlightening, and I appreciated the opportunity. And on June 20th, I attended the Washington County Consolidated Communications Agency Board of Commissioners meeting. One of the long-term members of that committee and, and public servants is retired, and I would say his name, except for I forgot it, chief. Do you remember his name?
Ron Bolton.
Yes, that gentleman. He's, so that was exciting to celebrate him. We endorsed the fiscal year '25 budget and upgrades to the systems for radio upgrades, and those will happen in October, and some other kind of general business around budgeting. And it's exciting that they know that there are going to be repairs for the future and the communication system needed, and they are putting aside funds annually to make sure that when that big amount of money is needed, that they at least have some money saved up to do that. So they're, they're working on putting money potentially, since it's eligible for, they believe, like a higher interest rate or something like that, to make the public's money really work for us. So it was, it's an impressive group of dedicated people. So, thank you.
Counsel Reyes?
No official meeting that I attended in the last couple of weeks.
Counsel Gonzalez?
No official meetings I've attended over communications.
Counsel Brooks?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, first, as we discussed, on Thursday, July 13th, the CAP Steering Committee met in person, which was nice. We celebrated the passage of the plan. And I just really want to call out, I mean, there are city employees from every single department that spend time working on this and collaborating together to come up with solutions and, and spend time thinking about it and talking about it. So I just want to really appreciate everybody that sits on the committee and all the work that they did to get us to this point. Then I attended that night the Clackamas County Dinner with Council President Pratt and the mayor, and we saw their new city hall, which is a repurposed building, and I'm sure those guys have more to say about as well, and really appreciate Cindy stepping up for the PAB. The PAB is going to have a big celebration of the Community Development Black Grant Anniversary, I've mentioned before. I think there's going to be a bus tour, and it sounds like we're going on an adventure. And, and I think there's also some changes with the home funding. So we'll figure that out, but just to have heads up around some of the changes in the home grant funding.
It's, it's on hold for a year.
It's on hold for a year.
It, it's on hold, because they're reviewing, I'm sorry, thank you, Counselor Brooks, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It's on hold for a year for policy review. However, there are unobligated funds at this time, so requests that come in still, I think there's about $500,000, so there is an opportunity for, for the, for still projects to come in, in the unobligated funds, if that makes sense.
So more news coming, but if there's any interest in that, just know that there's some shifting around. And then we, oh, I attended on Tuesday, June 18th, a webinar about race in water, which was really interesting. There's a lot of information around policymaking. One great thing is that the Portland water, drinking water was, is held up as one of the more inclusive documents and is used for a national example. And there's just a lot of things to consider that one wouldn't norm, normally consider. I'll just say one basic thing is if someone has their electricity turned off or their cable turned off, they wouldn't be at risk of losing their children, but if you have your water turned off, you can have your kids taken away from you. So that basic fundamental need of, of, you know, Maslow's hierarchy of needs of having things like water for kids, and when we think about prioritizing bills and all those kinds of things, it's just a really good thing to remember. And there's, I have a lot of information, if anyone's interested, there's a copy of the webinar, and there's a ton of reading lists and articles, and I'll forward it along. Just shoot me an email if you'd like it. The Arts Advisory Committee met as well on the 18th, and we met in person, which we haven't done for a while, and we did a prioritize mapping for how we're going to plan for budgets for the upcoming year. So it was a really rich and productive meeting. There's also some interesting policy things, just heads on the horizon around code, what's the code around arts and murals for private buildings? And some other things that I'm sure I will remember and bring up another time. Just a great group. And then on Thursday, the 20th, I attended the virtual NLC First Tier Suburbs Meeting, which was really interesting, and that was about planning 15-minute sedis, where you do, you do planning through walking, biking, or driving 15 minutes and those choices, and how, and then there was an example, and then every, all the cities across the country work together on doing examples through this website. And so that's really interesting information, and if anybody would like information on that, we'll let you know. And then finally, just through some of the communications that I've gotten through just through some of the communications that I've gotten through another one of the caucuses from the NLC this year in celebration of their 100th year anniversary, I'm interested in going, there is an opportunity for a sixth member in a community to go for free. So I don't know if this is when the kids are planning on going or not, but it's going to be in Tampa in November. So just letting you know. That's it for me. Thank you.
Council President Pratt?
I'm going to say the two fun things first. The Clackamas, yeah, I knew.
I'm sorry. And then I have to say thank you to, the mayor did a great job. Cindy's been amazing organizing as, and I wish that Kristen was here and there yesterday, or Saturday, when we celebrated our second annual pride. I just want to shout out the police department that did such a great job of being so friendly and guiding the walkers through the streets, which they were really excited to be on the streets. And, and I've saw, you know, Councilor, Council President Pratt, myself, and, and a lot of people from the community, and the speeches, especially from the kids, were just outstanding about their perspectives and their challenges in life. And even tonight, there's going to be, there has been a thing at the Historical Society where they're documenting history from LGBTQIAA community members in Tuolton, and it's led by a young person that Frank is familiar with, who we spoke with on the, on the stride. So thanks for every, to everybody.
Sorry.
Well, that was, I'm just going to leave with that.
Okay.
But the, the stories in, were really touching to me and how people still struggle and get treated. And I thought it was amazing, too, the people, the community members that organized it just did an excellent job, in my opinion. The Clackamas Counties Association, Senator, it was really very awesome to see not only the repurposed building, but they did a presentation. They're much closer to Portland, and they're, they've done a great job of densifying their city and making it still very livable. The big thing I went to was the Clackamas County C4 Retreat at Mount Hood, and our focus was on transportation and housing. We had surprise guests, Senator Gorsuch and Representative McLean from the State Transportation Committee. I'm not sure we got many clear answers.
You respecting some?
Apparently not. But out of that, because the next legislative session at the state is going to have a lot of focus on transportation, so we drafted together a joint values and outcomes statement that the hope is that all, you know, like our community would sign on it and other, like the county would sign on it, too, to show that, basically that, I'm just going to read the first line, that to support a seamless functional transportation system that prioritizes safety and reliable movement of people and goods. So there's some bullet points. And my ask is that if council is willing, that this needs to be backed by the 24th, that in the, hopefully in the next council meeting, maybe the one after that, if we push it, that we could have this as part of a work session, if council's willing.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay. They can go up. Busy couple of weeks. On the 13th, we had the informal Washington County Mayor's meeting. Two things in discussion was the effort, Washington County has engaged a consulting firm to help them with developing standards and expectations of the library going in the future, and then looking down the road a little bit about the next levy that's coming. So the mayors all chatted about that a little bit. The second item I sent you an email about is this WPES, the Metro Waste Advisory Committee. Got an email today from Council Rosenthal trying to push forward the thing I mentioned, that there's two things he'd like to have addressed in this committee. Slots right now on this committee are limited to five slots for cities slash counties for the whole metro region. He would like to expand that to almost like an impact model, where you have one per county and then maybe two cities per county. And where the mayors are asking what he needs us to do to get that across the finish line, or at least help him advocate for it at Metro. The second thing is that that committee has some say on how metro garbage collection works and rate setting. The meeting is on Thursday for Metro to approve it. So I might end up having to shoot a quick email to Council President Patterson, Peterson, and her, the other metro councillors, you know, endorsing what Council Rosenthal is asking for. All the mayors in the, in the Washington County are all on board with that. The Milwaukee City Dinner was interesting. It was the old Adventist headquarters, if you know Milwaukee, down near Pietro's. So it was a great idea to buy that building, repurpose it. The, you know, ended it, the happy thing is, yeah, the amount of residential growth that's planned in Milwaukee's phenomenal, but Pietro's will be going bye-bye. It's moving. But they're going to save the classic sign and move it where they go to their new location. So that was a interesting tidbit. On the 17th was the Washington County Coordinating Committee. The thing that's near and dear to us was that the committee approved the $6 million TDT project request that Mike referred to a couple of weeks ago. $2 million of that is for the improvements on Tualton Shorewood Road in Nyberg, and $4 million is for the improvements on 65th Saget in Borland. So that was approved unanimously. ODOT was there on construction, summer construction updates. If you haven't seen the billboards, all information going out, be aware that I-5 will be closed June 28th through July 1st between Barber and basically Tuiliger. Barber. 217 exit. The 99W. Yeah, yeah. So four miles will be closed both ways, plus there's additional work going down in Portland. So if you have any plans of going towards Portland, you're going to be going sideways. You're not taking I-5. Other things they mentioned, 217 improvements, you imagine this, they're halfway done. Only halfway done. Still envision to be done by fall of 2025. There will be night and weekend closures over the summer, so be prepared. If you're going on 217, you might be in for a surprise. Same thing with 99W. If you've been around where Buster's is, they're continually, they're doing paving and sidewalk improvement through the fall of 2024, and there'll be nighttime closures in 99W around that area. And then finally, Hall Boulevard, there'll be improvements between Locust Street and Durham Road to make that a little bit more pedestrian safety, so be prepared for delays there. The last item that was at the Washington County Coordinating Committee was Sherwood's presentation of their UGB concept plan, what they're calling Sherwood West. So picture you're on 99W, and you're on the west side, and it's basically all the land that you could, around the high school. So starting that Roy Rogers Road, heading towards Newburgh, down to where Sleigh Bells is on that side, 99W, Metro Sherwood would expand into. And it'd be a combination of high density, low density, cottage cluster, manufactured industrial. They're just awaiting the approval from Metro to do that UGB expansion, but they presented their concept plan. They've been taking the show on the road to get people ready for what's envisioned. They've had a pretty significant outreach to their community on this. Questions just abound about traffic and traffic and traffic and traffic. How are these, all these folks going to get around? They're envisioning 5,000 housing units. Yeah. So, but exciting for them. The mayor's meeting with Chair Harrington, Lisa Tatterstall, who is in charge of the Washington County Library Cooperative, gave her presentation on where they are at, working with the library directors and city managers on this process of reviewing the services that the library will provide into the future, how much is that going to cost, and then developing eventually the proposal for a public levy to go out, I believe, in '26, next year? Twenty-five, yeah. They, they envision they want to have a significant educational period between the time they put it down, the, by the time they get the word out, and they want to work, you know, pretty hard to get this levy passed. As mentioned, on Saturday, 22nd, the Pride Stride was a lot of fun. Beth Ditman and her crew, we did a phenomenal job, and Cindy doing it. Valerie Holt, her emceeing capabilities, very engaging. Enjoyed it a lot. And then finally, this morning, Steve, Kim, and Sherilyn and I met with DLCD Director Bateman and her Metro Regional Representative Laura Kelly to have a meet and greet with DLCD, and they were very receptive to some of the comments we made, especially Steve and Kim had some great points they brought up. And looking forward to working with them, you know, did the business card exchange, and they're totally open to if, if we got an issue and we want them to let, you know, let them know about it, just pick up the phone or shoot an email. So I was pretty impressed. She's been in her position for about two years. That's it for me. Anything else for the good order for this meeting? Remember, we have another one after this. All right.
I just, I remembered at one of the meetings that I attended for the NLC that there's a federal bill that we're advocating for, a lot of cities are advocating for, that streamlines grant processes for federal grants for cities. And so just keep your eye out for that, and it might be something that we want to talk about when we're working with our lobbyists and other things. Thanks.
So I have a motion to close this meeting.
So moved. Second.
Motion second to close the city council meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous. People want like a five-minute break or just power through? Power through?
Power enters.
All right. So now we're going to switch our hats. I'll go ahead and call to order the June 24th, 2024, Tualton Development Commission meeting. The first item is public comment. Public comment allows folks, as we're just to see the commission on things that are not on tonight's agenda. Please limit those comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody who would like to address the commission tonight? All right. That brings us to consent. Consent agenda items are items that are considered routine, to be enacted with one motion. I'll ask any commissioners if they have an item from consent that would like to have removed or heard later tonight. Okay. Oh, I got to read the item, don't I, Doug? This commission thing is, you know, we don't do it a lot. So the tonight consent agenda tonight consists of, item one, consideration of approval of Tualton Development Commission meeting minutes of January 22nd, 2024. See, that's why we're rusty now to have a motion to adopt.
Is that it?
That's it.
I'll make a motion to adopt the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right. I have a motion, a second, to adopt the consent agenda as read. Any discussion on those motions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Noes, abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. Public hearing, item number one, Mr. Hudson's back again. Consideration of Resolution Number 637-24, authorizing changes to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 adopted budget. Welcome again.
Thank you. Are you tired of me yet?
No, but the sun's versing, it's, I don't know if it's going to go up on your face or not.
If we hurry. No, this is the changes to 2324. Mayor, commissioners, or chairman and commissioners, see, we don't do it very often.
Yeah.
I'm Don Hudson. I'm the Assistant City Manager and Finance Director for the City of Tualton, and also the Tualton Development Commission. In front of you tonight is a Resolution 637-24, which is authorizing changes to the 2324 adopted budget for the TDC. Local budget law, budget law allows for a supplemental budget to be prepared to authorize the transfer of appropriation authority to an appropriations category that doesn't already exist in the adopted budget. That's what tonight's change is related to. So in the 2324 budget, there was $132,220, $220 in the Leviton Projects Funds Transfers category. And during our most recent independent audit, the auditors asked us, or said that that really should be classified as a special payment instead of a transfer. So we're asking for that change to be made, to move that appropriation from the transfers category, create the special payments category, and move it into that. There's no impact to the fund, as the resolution only moves one appropriation category into a new, a new category. At that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment or testify in terms of consideration of Resolution 637-24? All right. With that, any questions for Don? I'll go ahead and close the hearing and then open the floor for discussions or motions.
I'd like to motion that we adopt Resolution 637-24. I can't read my first word. Would changes, changes to the adopted 2023, 2024 budget, adopted budget. Second.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 637-24, authorizing changes to the fiscal year 2023, 2024 adopted budget. Any discussions on those motions? Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Aye.
Council Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye, and the resolution is adopted. That brings us to public hearing number two. Consideration of Resolution Number 638-24, adopting the Tualton Development Commission budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024. No ad valoreums for the commission?
No, there's no, no taxes that are, there are taxes, but not, yes.
You're up.
Okay.
Public hearing is open. You're up.
Ah, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, I am Don Hudson, Assistant City Manager and Finance Director with the city and the commission. You have in front of you this evening Resolution 63824, adopting the Tualton Development Commission budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024, and making appropriations. Statutes require the commission adopt the budget prior to July 1st. The Tualton Budget Advisory Committee adopted or approved the commission budget on May 29th, 2024. There are no changes being proposed by staff to the appro, the approved budget this evening. The total commission budget is $3,340,475, and is comprised of budgets in three funds, the Tualton Development Commission Administration Fund, the Southwest Urban Renewal District Bond Fund, and the Core Opportunity and Reinvestment Area Bond Fund. By adopting the attached resolution, the commission will be able to operate, expend money, and incur liabilities for fiscal year 2024, 2025, beginning on July 1st. That, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Would any member of the public like to provide comment on Resolution Number 638-24? All right. Any questions for Don? Seeing no questions, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and open the floor for deliberations and/or motions.
I just have a clarifying question.
Sure.
On this, it says 637-24.
That's the one we just adopted.
Oh.
We're in 638.
Oh, I don't know what that is. Okay. That's all. I'll make a motion to adopt 638-24, authorizing, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2425.
Second.
All right. I have a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 638-24, adopting the Tualton Development Co, the Development, Development Commission budget and making appropriations for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024. Any discussions on those motions? All right. Council Gonzalez?
Aye.
Council Brooks?
Aye.
Council Hillier?
Aye.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council President Pratt?
Aye.
I vote aye. So Resolution 638-24 is passed unanimously. We have a budget for the commission.
Thank you very much. And just in time, I can get out of here before.
All right. There is no council roundtable with a commission meeting, so we just have an adjournment. All those in favor of adjourning this meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Good evening. Have a terrific eve, night. I got to see who's winning the hockey game. Who won?